Good evening. Welcome to the Southampton City Council meeting for Wednesday, April 18th.
Nineteen.
Nineteen? Nineteen. The meeting tonight is being recorded and broadcast by eMedia on Shutter Channel 193 and live streaming on their webpage, ishamptonmedia.org. Councilors who are participating in this meeting are gathering in hybrid on the order extended until March 2025, which allow us to do so. I remind both the members of the city council and the public, participating remote remain mute under recognized by the president. Also, for the member of the public, please remove your camera for the duration of the meeting unless you are participating in the public speak time of the public hearing. Thank you. This meeting is now called to order. Barbara.
Connie Denham?
Here.
Salem Derby? Omar Gomez?
Here.
JP Kozinski?
Here.
Dave Munier?
Here.
Tom Peak?
Here.
Brad Riley?
Here.
Dan Rist?
Here.
Owen Zera?
Present.
Please stand up for the pleasure of the lead.
Pleasure of the lead. To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would take a motion to approve the minutes from April 5th.
Sound moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from April 5th. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Barbara.
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Salem Derby? Oh, sorry. Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Dave Munier?
Epstein.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Owen Zera?
Epstein.
One, two, three, four, five. Motion passes.
Yeah.
I also want to be sure that we have the votes. Public speak time. This is the opportunity that the public have to address any concerns or coming to the council. Can you please state your name and address, go to the podium? You're going to have three minutes.
Jim O'Donnell. I live in Cliffview Manor, in a galaxy far, far away. And I spell Jim with two M's for the record. I'm thinking that one of you here without the name tag is a secretary.
I'll fix it.
Okay. May I approach the board briefly?
Just give it to him and he will, Councilor Riley, and he will pass it to us.
Thank you.
This is hard for me, so I made myself notes. So, two M's and Jim, just for the record. Also for the record, the East Hampton Housing Authority stole from me. I recently had a so-called emergency situation that went unattended for four days. I have a number of complaints and grievances that I'm trying to put into place that are going unanswered. I have recently been subjected to a frivolous eviction threat. It had to do with submitting a particular tax form and not just the information. And what I gave them met all the requirements, but it wasn't the form. The East Hampton Housing Authority's board meetings go unpublished, even after I challenged them with the 10-day request that I read about in the open meeting laws. They remain delinquent, and not for the first time. I think their attorney is what I'm calling ethically obstructive, but I don't know enough about that to say anything other than, if you're interested. The director, the board chair, and the attorney are decidedly hostile. If there's a place for me to do this, I would suggest, or maybe even request, that at least one member of the city council attend the Housing Authority's monthly board meetings, not the first time I've mentioned that. At our last meeting, a city councillor was there and asked for the recordings from the previous month's meetings, and I would, I don't know if those can be made publicly available, but I know better than to ask any of them. I would also suggest that if it's possible for the board, the East Hampton Housing Authority Board, to have their meetings here, it would be a good idea for a number of reasons. It would have to be worked out, I'm sure, but it wouldn't be that hard, I don't think. And I think it would be a good idea to compel this to happen.
Jim, you already have three minutes.
Was that three minutes?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Seeing none. Communication for elected officials, person committees. Any councilor have anything for tonight? Seeing none. Mayor's communication. Mayor?
Good evening, Mr. President. I am here as the agenda indicates to present my proposed FY '24 budget for the city. I emailed that budget to President Gomez earlier today, as well as a copy to our city clerk, and it will also be on the website. We will have paper copies in different places in the city, including my office, city clerk, 32 PACE, and the library, and the council on aging. I want to thank all the department head leads for all of their efforts and working with me on this budget to present what I think is a very prudent budget, as well as one that follows the values of our city. I have to give a very special thank you to Heather Clark, who is a project manager out of my office, as well as Eleanor Cartelli, who works in internet technology and help with the formatting. The result is a much more interactive city budget document that can reside on the website and bring from the table of contents, residents, to any particular chapter of the budget, as well as to state resources that back up our budget. At the very end of my message, you will see a link that goes to municipal dashboards that's created by the state, and they keep them up. This is the latest information, and I would like to submit hard copies to the vice chair of the city council, as he's also the chair of finance, to have a hard copy on hand, but also, all of this is found at the, on the link in my mayor budget. So if I may, I'll do that later. As city practice, I will read the mayor budget, which you will see at the very beginning of my budget, that gives a very top-line overview. Dear President Gomez and city councillors, candidly, I see no need to bury the lead for fiscal year 2024. My budget guidance to the city departments had two directives. No deductions of wages or positions. Two, add 3% to expenses. These directives are to compare apples to apples across the departments. I then met with each department to review requested expenditures, unique to their department, and while considering obligated payroll expenses. As a result, the department's increases are not equal in amount, but follow an arc of equity for a municipal budget that reflects East Hampton's priorities. As of 2023 January, our retirement system is funded at 88%, the highest percent in Western Massachusetts, with a 20.9% increase in our asset holding. And that thanks goes to our East Hampton Retirement Board, who watches our assets and works with the state very closely to make sure that we can do the best we can. Our debt ratios are well within our financial policies, reserves are historically high, and our bond rating remains at AA+. However, resting on our January 2023 strengths are fool's errand, with our world shifting unpredictably fast. Our fiscal course over the last five years was grounded in a resilient local economy and filling historical fiscal gaps, and it gives us now an option in the time of extremes. My fiscal year 2024 budget assumptions follow past practices with an eye towards longer-term factors. These assumptions are as followed. Local aid, including Chapter 70 and Chapter 90 grants, will be funded below inflation. Planned excluded debt increase for Mountain View Schools closeout in about 10 months. A 4% to 6% rise in healthcare expense. Rising post-employment benefit liability. Lower retirement contributions to the cities due to the city's demographic and cost of living. Unpredictable energy costs and reoccurring supply chain issues. Property market values driven by scarcity of housing, both rental and commercial. With the above assumptions, my proposed budget conservatively estimates revenue while keeping expenses focused on modernization and retaining employees. Regional economic factors are out of the city's control normally, and now are wildly unpredictable. International market conditions, inflation, wages, the price of energy and materials are some of our budget's biggest variables. Balancing a tight budget with healthy stabilization funds give East Hampton pliability if faced with unforeseen costs, bonding, capital, and labor costs. The city's resilience relies on healthy funding of stabilization accounts to preserve the option of funding one-time expenses based on our fiscal performance. In short, we leverage today's strengths to flatten the unpredictable fiscal curves of the future. The city's American Rescue Plan Act award of $4.7 million continues to be dispensed as prioritized in our publicly informed plans. ARPA expenditures are driven by the allowed use of funds and the plans such as our City Spirit Report, Arts Visioning, Rapid Recovery Plan, Open Space, Housing Need, and Production Plans. Use of these funds for salary ends on December 31st of 2024, and contracts for services and capital items must be executed by December 31, 2024, and totally spent down by 2026. I project these funds will be expended by the end of fiscal year '24, with staff, any staff funded in part with ARPA dollars, becoming a part of the fiscal year 2025 general fund. East Hampton is in a position to proactively plan borrowing and spending. To close out the Mountain View School project, we must bond. Accordingly, our reserve must remain high and our debt ratio healthy to preserve our bond rating and get the best possible rate and amortization schedule based on our financial soundness. Over the last year and into the next, we have increased maintenance efforts, capital spending via grants, employee retention, as well as hiring. My fiscal year 2024 budget reflects the values of East Hampton with investments across departments, taking on minimal debt, and meeting our commitments to refunding, to funding retirement accounts. New growth and nearly 100% collected local revenues in fiscal year 2023 helped us push back against inflation and closed gaps left in last year's budget. City departments that increased staff with COVID-19 or grant dollars were asked for a plan to bring those staff into the general fund budget again by 2025 if needed. The personnel expense side of this budget begins to reflect this directive in addition to collective bargaining obligations and restructuring non-union staff compensation. As a result, I propose, I propose an FY 2024 budget of $52 million and 800,000, 52 million 800,000 with change. This is an increase over last, last year's budget, and you will see that in the actual budget book. Again, the percents of increase are not necessarily the telling factor of what department got what, but the actual measure of dollars and where on each line item dollars were put. The city's enterprise fund that directly covers, that accepts water and sewer rate revenue to cover the water, sewer, and wastewater operations, it's separate than the city funds. If our rate revenue is lower than the expense of these departments, the remaining expenses must come from East Hampton's general fund, thus raising the tax rate. And as a, as a result, and to avoid this, water and sewer rates rise on July 1st, 2023, at the start of the 2024 budget, with increases, additional increases in fiscal year '25 and fiscal year 2026. Rising rates are certainly a burden for ratepayers, but the alternative is a higher overall property tax rate. To give some relief to taxpayers, we use Tax Relief Stabilization Fund and Cannabis Stabilization Fund to reduce the levy we must raise per state formulas. Monthly reports outlining year-to-date expenditures and revenue will continue and will be augmented by reports detailing the receipt spending and reimbursement rate of COVID-related funds. I ask our residents in this council to sign up on the website for East Hampton NotifyMe to get text or email notification for budget updates, department updates, and public meetings. Our website, just as a reminder, is easthamptonma.gov. With continued gratitude and hope to this council and the residents of East Hampton, I respectfully submit my budget for fiscal year 2024.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilor Rist?
Mr. President, I move that the mayor's fiscal year '24 budget be sent to Finance Committee for review, as well as a public hearing be set for the first meeting in June for that said budget.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to move the proposal of the 2024 budget and to schedule a public hearing for June 7th at 6:15 in this chamber. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Barbara.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Dave Munier? Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Owen Zera?
Aye.
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Motion passes. Anything else, Madam Mayor?
No, not for this. Well, actually, one additional thing. Tomorrow, in our pursuit to reduce our carbon impact to zero by 2040, employees and members of boards of committee, and if space, members of the public are invited to come here to this parking lot between noon and 4:00 and test drive electric vehicles at no cost and learn about the tax benefits that residents can take advantage of, as well as elected officials. We have about 150 spots, and there will be five different cars, including a very sought-after car in East Hampton, the Ford Lightning F-150 truck. We worked really hard to get it, and this is a public-private partnership with Move EV that's out of MIT Greentown.
Thank you. And councilor have any question for the mayor? Councilor Sarr?
Mayor, thank you for this initiative. Do we have to sign, is there a sign up? Oh, okay.
There is a sign-up sheet at the end of the email, but the link was somewhat obscured, so I encourage people just to stop by. We have five to seven cars, so the wait time, I mean, you'll get, you can, you can try more than one. And, and I'm less worried about the sign-ups as, like, leaving spots empty. There will be homemade donuts and coffee, and, and there are incentive prizes and giveaways in the form of solar, car charger, I don't know, gadget chargers, and it also has a flashlight that we'll be giving, giving away as a part of this. This will also, it's already being focused on the city's fleet and decarbonizing that. So we'd love to see everybody, even if you want donuts and nothing else. That's, that's right.
Thank you. Thank you.
Tomorrow.
Oh!
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Oh, shoot.
That decision should be happening. Anything else?
The date is tomorrow. Noon to 4:00. Thank you.
Thank you.
And my apologies, Mr. President.
That's fine. I will take a motion to open up a hearing.
Sound moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second to open a public hearing. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Barbara.
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Dave Munier?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Owen Zera?
Aye.
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye. Motion passes. Councilor Rist?
Yeah, we have a few interdepartment transfers and appropriations. The first is an interdepartment transfer for election and registration computer services. This is to acquire the software for a public records tracking database, which will also cost $595 a year moving forward. This database will allow the clerk to much more efficiently make public records requests easier to find. Now, as I understand it, these public records database will be looking at new records and won't go back and try to digitize all the old records. Correct me if I'm wrong on that, Barbara, but this is designed to make it easier moving forward for public records requests to be easily found by the clerk. The Finance Committee approved it 3 to 0. I don't know if you want Barbara or anybody?
Just one second, I have someone. You want to add something?
We're hoping that this database, which is used by quite a few other clerks that I know, will help it, make it easier to keep track of what we're getting in, what the 10-day period is, who I need to chase if they haven't responded. It's more of a keeping track of the comings and goings, and we've been very busy lately, and it became obvious that we really kind of needed some help on this. So, this is, this is a basic tracking database. Down the road, we might decide we want something fancier, but this, we thought was a good place to start.
Any councilor have any questions? No? Anyone from the public that want to participate about this interdepartmental transfer? Anyone from the people who's participating remote? I don't see anyone. Councilor Rist?
Just a final comment. This is being transferred from the Election and Registration Computer Services Fund that Barbara has to Technology Software. So I'll make a motion to approve, the full council approves, an interdepartmental transfer for the following transfer from Election and Registration Computer Services, $2,895, to be transferred to Technology Software, $2,895, for the purpose of the acquisition of a public records tracking database to assist in the day-to-day handling of public records requests. Proposal covers initial setup of the database and three months of maintenance and support. Annual fee going forward is $595 a year.
Now, yeah.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for interdepartmental transfer of $2,895 for the portion of the public record tracking database. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Barbara.
Dave Munier? Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Owen Zera?
Aye.
Connie Denham? Omar Gomez? JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Motion passes. Councilor Rist?
The next transfer is to pay a very old bill from the city attorney's office. We are actually going to pay it out of this year's city attorney services account. It came really late, and I know that the mayor is trying to improve the bill and invoicing from the city attorney. So, the Finance Committee approved it 3 to 0. It's an old bill.
Any councilor have any questions? Anyone from the public that want to participate about this one? Seeing none, Councilor Rist?
I move that the full council approve an interdepartmental transfer. The amount requested is $2,402 to be transferred from the city attorney professional services account, to be transferred to the city attorney professional services account for this year, 2402, to provide, to pay prior fiscal year bill for city attorney out of current fiscal year.
We have a motion and a second to, for the interdepartmental transfer of $2,402 for the city attorney fiscal year 2022 old bill. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Barbara.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Owen Zera?
Aye.
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Omar Gomez? JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Dave Munier?
Aye.
Motion passes. Councilor Rist?
The next is a supplemental appropriation. It's a typical end-of-year fiscal year anticipated deficit in the city attorney's account. This is primarily driven by many of the projects that are going on in the city that need legal review, also personnel issues that need legal review. The mayor anticipates this $30,000 should cover legal costs for the rest of the year. The Finance Committee approved it 3 to 0.
Any councilor have any questions? Anyone from the public want to participate or have any questions or comments? Seeing none, Councilor Rist?
I move that the full council approve a supplemental appropriation. The amount requested is $30,000 to be transferred from free cash, $30,000, to be transferred to the legal account, $30,000. Will be used for the following purpose: legal cost build for fiscal year '23.
Second.
A motion and a second for the supplemental appropriation of $30,000 for the fiscal year 2023 legal cost. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Barbara.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Owen Zera?
Aye.
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Omar Gomez? JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Dave Munier? Tom Peak?
Aye.
Motion passes. Councilor Rist?
The next is a capital stabilization request. This is $90,000 to improve the public safety conference room for city department training, but more so to improve the technology for emergency operations. We have not had this technology improved, I think it was for 15 years. This emergency operations center is necessary whenever there is a citywide emergency, like there was with the microburst that happened a few years ago. Constant and important communication is necessary when emergencies happen, and this technology upgrade was, is welcome. I know that our IT director, Corinne, is here, as well as the chief of the fire department who presented this, if there's any other questions. The Finance Committee approved it 3 to 0.
Before the councilors, Karen, do you want to say something?
Yes, apologies, I'm in the car, I'm on my way home. $90,000 is an important investment, but it's, in comparison, the technology that we're adding to that space is similar to the technology that you will find in any of the classrooms in the new school. And the space is not only used for training, what you need, a projector that projects and a sound system that you can control, it's going to be used as, probably the chief is going to explain, as our Center for Operations when our emergency responders need to communicate. So it's, it's an important investment.
Thank you. Chief Norris?
Good evening, and thank you, everyone. As it was kind of alluded to already, I wanted to at least come before the city leadership and just at least outline and explain, number one, what this room is used for and kind of the purposes behind this request. Essentially, this room is housed in the public safety complex. The capacity is about 35 to 40 people. It's not only used for fire and police and EMA services, but for other outside agencies, such as the DPW, who's been using it for 10 or 12 times just this calendar year, to other outside committees and other agencies throughout the city as well. It's my understanding that, as the director just alluded to about the IT upgrades, it's been at least about 15 years, is my understanding. And most importantly, this is the city emergency operations center. To give the councilors and the city an understanding, I brought in the director of MEMA, the Mass Emergency Management Agency, Don Brantley, back in the fall time, and sat down with her in that room and asked for kind of guidance and assistance in terms of what we needed to upgrade it to today's standards and technology. And that's what was being brought forward as part of this request. And then, you know, finally in close, and certainly, this room in terms of the operations center is used on a regular basis, most notably, most recently, was back on March 13th when we had that last major snowstorm come through. thirteenth when we had that last major snowstorm come through. We had Deputy Chief Benson and Sergeant Alexander both up there working collaboratively, collaboratively together, um, in terms of coordinating the emergency response throughout the city for that most recent snowstorm. So certainly a critical uh, component and uh, resource for this community. And I'm happy to answer any questions that uh, your council may have.
Thank you. Any councilor have any questions? Consular Zaret?
Chief, you had mentioned that uh, this room is used by other committees and, and such for other meetings. Will the, will these technology upgrades be available, or will they be of benefit to the public at large or the, or the city at large, on top of obviously the added, the add-on for public safety?
Yes, absolutely. Um, in terms of just the overall comprehensive updates needed for that, um, whether it's a um, department level training that's being held there, or an outside agency, um, it will be available to all those groups, um, coming forward using that, that space.
Consular Denham?
Um, so just a quick question, if I, if I understood correctly, um, part of what this does with the coordination upstairs is it would relieve tension or stress on dispatch, um, if there's an emergency going on?
Yes, Councilor, that's correct. And again, I'll, I'll use the most recent example, um, back on the snowstorm on March thirteenth, um, one of the ways we utilized that space in that room with both police and fire up there, all of the non-emergency calls, um, coming into dispatch were directly forwarded upstairs, um, and that was used to prioritize all the power outages. And we had a direct link into the Eversource Emergency Operations Center, uh, directly from that room, as well as the State Emergency Operations Center, which was opened, using the platform they called WebEOC. So that took that burden off of the dispatchers and transferred it up to that Emergency Operations Center where police and fire are working together.
Great, thank you.
Consular Riley?
Um, yeah, so I just want to say, you know, when I was on the Public Safety Committee, um, you know, I, um, spent a couple of days, um, with the folks in the Police Department and the Fire Department and, um, you know, I, I guess, I don't, I don't know if the public necessarily understands the volume of information that gets processed, um, in the Public Safety Complex on any given day. Um, and you know, I know that our, um, team over there do a fantastic job in processing that amount of information in real time, all the time, and it never ends. Um, this, this kind of an investment, um, into this technology, I mean, it, it's just, I mean, it's something that we need to do. Um, you know, the, the complexity of challenges that our city is going to face in the future, um, particularly around climate change and disaster resilience, um, an investment now means that we don't have to plan post-emergency in the future, when the next natural disaster comes. And it's, it's an absolute certainty that that will happen, so, you know, I, I think this should at least be the first step, uh, in investing, um, in more technology and, and I hope that in the future, um, you know, we continue, um, to further invest, uh, to make sure that they are ready and, uh, capable to go when, when we need them the most. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Any other councilor? Seeing none? Anyone from the public have any questions or comment? Yep. You want to say something, go to the podium, state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
I just, um, proactive, yay. Good point. We miss that a lot. I'm just not clear on what room we're talking about is above the...
Is it the Public Safety?
And we call it the Public Safety Complex Function Room? Or?
I don't know how they call it, but I know it's a room in the Public Safety.
What do we call this room?
This is City Council Chambers.
Hmm?
City Council Chambers.
What did he say?
City Council Chambers.
City Council Chambers?
Yes.
Ah, okay, thank you.
How you call that room? Say, ru- room in the second floor?
I wasn't sure which of the two.
So for clarification, um, there's three rooms in that Public Safety Building. The room we're talking about, it has the capacity of thirty-five to forty people. It's the large community room. Um, then there's a smaller conference room, and then downstairs in the lobby, there's also another one. Uh, but, uh, the room we're talking about is the one that gets utilized the most by not only the city departments, but also the public as well.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else participating remote? Seeing none? Consular Rist?
I move the full council approve a supplemental appropriation. The amount requested is ninety thousand dollars to be transferred from Capital Stabilization, ninety thousand dollars to be transferred to the FY twenty-three Public Safety Site Improvement Account, ninety thousand dollars. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose, upgrade the audio and visual equipment and technology in the joint training room for public safety, community room and conference room for other city department training. Um, AV equipment and technology in this room is over fifteen years old and ability to get replacement parts are nonexistent. This room serves as the Emergency Operations Center for the entire city to enable communication and coordination for large-scale emergencies throughout the city. The requested amount is based on a quote received in coordination with the City IT Department as well.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the supplemental appropriation of ninety thousand dollars for the audiovisual equipment and technology upgrades in the Public Safety Training Room. Any further discussion? Seeing on Barbara.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Owen Zaret.
Aye.
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kozinski.
Aye.
Dave Munier.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Motion passes. Consular Rist?
The next is a supplemental appropriation of two hundred thousand dollars. The School Department has indicated that they have a predicted shortfall in their School Department Vocational Tuition Account, and I think if Nick's on, he'll correct me if I'm wrong, that amount was three hundred and sixty-one thousand, four hundred and ninety-two dollars. One hundred and sixty-one thousand, four ninety-two will be able to be transferred from other accounts within the, within the School Department, with of course, School Committee approval. Uh, there were some savings in transportation, for instance, that helped, uh, to cover this deficit. The two hundred thousand dollars is needed to cover the remaining amount necessary. The Finance Committee approved this three to zero.
Any councilor, uh, before any councilors, uh, Dr. Leclerc or Nick, do you want to add something? Dr. Leclerc?
I, I will, thank you. Um, we are looking to just cover this shortfall that we've experienced this year in our vocational tuition line. Um, and as Consular Rist indicated, uh, the amount of funds that we anticipate having, um, still available at the end of the school year will be transferred into covering, um, the rest of the balance in that account beyond the two hundred thousand.
Thank you. Nick, do you want to add something else?
As I may.
Can you please state your names and your position in this school set?
My name is Nicholas Burnier, I'm the Director of Business Services for East Hampton Public Schools. Um, thank you very much. Um, I just wanted to add a note that i-if in the case at the end of the year, there's anything left over, it would revert back to the city's general fund. Um, it, you know, the School Department doesn't keep any of that, we have to zero our budget at the end of the year, there's a School Committee policy in place, so if our shortfall in the vocational lines ends up slightly south of what we're projecting, it would go back to the city's general fund.
Thank you. Any councilors have any questions? Councilors all right?
Yep.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Um, so I, I just want to try to get a, gain a better understanding of, uh, the genesis of this. Was it that, was it a complication with available monies that we had via budgeting? And/or was it that we had more students, um, opting, uh, to, to vocational schools? Is, could I just, so that we can potentially either plan better for the future or just understanding how we're here now, I was just wondering how we got here.
Nick? Dr. Leclerc?
I don't know who wants to answer it.
I'll, I'll let Nick answer it, he's there.
Um, uh, the, the former counselor would be, um, shortly after I came on board, our um, School Committee revoted our budget that was passed to mirror the budget that was passed by the City Council last year. And in doing so, we reduced the two vocational tuition lines, um, largely due to the predictability of what you're going to spend from them, um, which made it easier for me to do my forecasting, which came up with the number that we're asking for tonight.
Any, uh, Consular Riley?
Um, yeah, and I, I don't remember what the actual numbers are, and I don't know if you have this off the top of your head, but, um, so, there was also a percentage increase in the tuition for these programs, and it, and I believe there's also another, uh, percentage increase for next year as well. Um, can you, do you have any of those numbers, just to give, give us an idea of, you know, why we're seeing these numbers go up?
Um, yeah, there's a percentage increase every year, I'm not exactly sure what it was coming into this year. Um, going into next year, um, Smith-Vogue is going up, I believe, to, I think it's two point five percent, which was a little bit less than I thought. Um, see, unfortunately, when you're building your budget, those numbers aren't quite out yet, they come from DESI. Um, excuse me, they were released last week. Um, LPVEC, where we also send quite a few students, they're at a seven and a half percent increase for next year. Um, that number I had prior to our budget being submitted, um, to the School Committee for a vote. Um, we don't anticipate a huge increase in students going to vocational schools next year. Um, you know, largely, your, your students going into grades ten, eleven, and twelve is, is pretty predictable, once you have a student in a program, generally they stay there, um, unless they move to another, another city or town. Um, your incoming grade nine students are your question mark. Um, but in doing so, I had some conversations with, um, school administrators to kind of see what the, those numbers were, you know, looking like, although we won't have final totals until probably May.
Thank you.
Any other councilors? Anyone from the public? I know I saw him. Anyone from the public? There are people that are in person first and they're going to allow you participate remote. Please go to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Thank you, I'm Megan Harvey, my address is Twenty-One Button Road. Um, I have had my notes here, I'm a little nervous given the context of the past couple of weeks. Uh, just wanted to first say thank you, um, to all the councilors and to the mayor and the School Committee for, um, the very different budget that was just passed for next year, while we, uh, now address last year or the current year's budget. Um, and this, maybe my public speak will answer part of Counselor Zaret's, uh, question, which is that we worked really hard last year and collaboratively, excuse me. We worked really hard and collaboratively last year, um, to deal with a budget shortcoming, with the goal, the community coming together, with the School Committee, with the councilors, with the mayor, with the, our superintendent and our business manager, um, to achieve level services for our students. That's our number one priority and always has been. Um, and, uh, we created an agreement, um, that was signed by all parties. Um, I know that you remember this very well because it was hard fought, um, on all sides. And part of that was that when the appropriation came before the committee that you would approve it. Um, and so I'm excited to be here tonight, to see the last part of that, um, agreement come to be. Uh, we knew that this, this was going to be, uh, something that at some point this year came before you, and, uh, here it is. Um, and there's been a lot of, um, questions about transparency and public trust, and I just see this as a moment for, um, our hard work in the past to, you know, be fulfilled, and hopefully that will continue to, uh, build public trust. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here in person, before I go to the before participating remote? Seeing on Marion?
Hi, good evening everybody, this is Mary Goldstein, uh, Sixteen John Street, the Finance Subcommittee Chair for the School Committee. Um, similar to what Megan was just speaking to, I just wanted to clarify that, again, we were here in front of you, working with you all ten months ago, when there was questions and concerns about the budget, uh, for FY twenty-three. Um, at that time, there was an agreement that was made, uh, between our, um, our group, yours, and the mayor's office, um, and it was really understood at that time that we were looking at over a five hundred thousand dollar shortfall, um, that was not being in, included in our budget, and that at the time was focused on the transportation costs and these tuition costs. Um, the transportation costs, again, just to bring that, uh, into clarity, we all knew moving into Mountain View School was going to increase our transportation costs, um, and that, um, and we, sorry, it's very confusing to see myself as I'm talking, speaking back to myself, apologize. Um, so, it's, um, we knew that that cost was coming, uh, we all knew it when we built the school, when we planned the school, um, and then last year was the time for that to happen, and yet unfortunately, the funds were then not supported to be included in our budget. Um, and so what we have done, uh, since then, as a part of that agreement, we have met, um, as a couple different pieces that was to that agreement, one was that we were going to be having, uh, our School Department, uh, audited through the process with the mayor's office. Um, we've gone through that process and as, um, Nick could speak to more specifically, but my understanding is that the entire process was really shifted away from any kind of financial audit and looking more closely at the software that is used and how that can be, um, uh, refined as we use the city's software and how we can do that, uh, better to improve our funding, uh, collaboration between our departments and the City Department. Uh, the second part to that agreement was that we would meet with the Finance Subcommittee of the City Council. We've done that several times to review our budget, to make sure that, um, we can offer as much clarity and understanding. Um, we do have a large budget, budget in terms of, uh, how the city, uh, provides to schools, um, and, uh, there are some nuances in terms of how that budget is managed, as we have to meet, uh, DESI and state regulations, and so we went through those, that budget across a couple meetings, uh, with City Council members, uh, to ensure that there was as much transparency and understanding, uh, together. So that's another piece that we have committed and completed with the Finance Subcommittee. Um, the third part, as Megan, uh, mentioned, was this appropriation. We had, we knew going into this that we were going to be needing an additional allocation. Um, again, we had asked, I think it was, uh, five hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, so just over five hundred thousand dollars was what we originally, was the shortfall. We have done the best we can, absolutely, throughout this school year to minimize our costs in order to be able to cover that as much internally as possible. Um, and, uh, and so we have been able to reduce that, um, significantly, uh, but there is still a two hundred thousand dollar shortfall that we are asking for the City Council now to appropriate, as we had known and was a part of the agreement, uh, put forward, um, last summer. So that is why we're here now, asking for that. Um, these costs are built into our program, there's a public, um, requirement that the schools offer the opportunity for students to go to other vocational schools, it's not a choice, we don't get to choose to not send our students there or not give them this opportunity, this is our state requirement. And so these students have requested, uh, to go to these other Smith, uh, Smith and uh, other vocational schools, and that is what this fund is for. Um, so that's why we are asking for this appropriation tonight of two hundred thousand dollars. So I hope again, um, that good faith that we all had together when we signed that agreement last summer, uh, is continued tonight and we can see this appropriation approved. Thank you very much for your time, all the City Council members.
Thank you. Anyone else? One more time, anyone else? Seeing none? Consular Rist?
I move the full council approve a supplemental appropriation. The amount requested is two hundred thousand dollars to be transferred from free cash, two hundred thousand dollars, to be transferred to School Intergovernmental Account, two hundred thousand dollars, for the purpose of covering a deficit in the School Department Vocational Tuition Account.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the supplemental appropriation of two hundred thousand dollars to cover a deficit in the School Department Vocational Tuition Account. Any further discussion, Consular Rist?
I just want to say that in my long history on the council, we have often had a city versus school mentality, as if it was us versus them. We're all in this together, we're one community, and we all care for the students that we have to educate. And I like what's happening now. And I like what's happening now. I like a development that is transparency, that is trust between the administration and, and the school department. And I hope, and I also know that there was much better and, and a good result in communication with the budget process for this fiscal, for the next fiscal year. So this trust is important, that we continue it, and I'd like us to get away from the mentality of the school versus the city. We are one city. And I'd like us to, as my parting thought, because this is the last time I'll be dealing with the budget as a city councillor this year, let's keep doing this. This is great. Let's keep communicating, let's build trust between the accounting departments of both the city and the schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other councilors? Seeing none, Barbara?
Owen Zaret.
Aye.
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kozinski.
Aye.
Dave Munier.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Motion passes. Counselor Rist?
Okay, I'm sorry you have to listen to me a few more times. The administration, I'm sorry, we have a new committee, which we postponed acting on last, last meeting in order to give Counselor Zaret a chance to present it as well as myself. This new committee, it's called the Bee's Committee for short, but it is the biodiversity, biodiversity, environmental, ecological sustainability committee. Just to give a little history, a resolution for a B city was sent to the City Council Rules and Government Relations Committee in that there was a call for establishing a quote unquote "B" city, and maybe having an ad hoc committee of the full council to look into it. This dealt with bee pollinization and native gardens, et cetera. At my suggestion, rather than do the, the temporary ad hoc committee, that we might target a more permanent committee targeting all aspects of climate change, including agriculture, sustainability, conservation, and energy, a committee that would inform climate action. A committee has, the committee as proposed by Counselor Zaret, who wrote this ordinance after my suggestion, has specific membership in it to approach energy, agriculture, and conservation, as well as one councillor, and would have other members of the public involved. And there is a lot of enthusiasm for this kind of committee in the public, and I always think that having more pub, the public activism in this area would be great. It will be tasked with proposing legislation and policy that would target climate action. Just like the EDIC gave us a good ordinance proposal for the recent vacant storefront, this kind of a committee can help the mayor and this council legislate, set up policy towards climate action, towards sustainability, biodiversity, et cetera. The other thing that, that I just learned about even more so today, because I had an interview with the Rivera Consulting Firm that's looking into environmental justice as one topic. Environmental justice is an important topic as it deals with equity in environmental affairs, and this committee can actually help a great deal in that area. So without further discussion on my part, Mr. President, if you would, I would like to ask you to allow public, Counselor Zaret to, as this was his ordinance, to present his thoughts.
Counselor Zaret?
Thank you so much for that introduction. It gave me butterflies in my stomach.
Are you sure it's not bees?
Well, we'll get there. First of all, just a couple of thanks around this. Certainly, thank you to Counselor Chair Rist of the Rules Committee and the other members for the consideration and dialogue that went into this. As, as the public may or may not know, this, as the councillor indicated, this started off as a proposal to form, to allow the city to adopt the resolution to become a Xerxes Society B city. And what that entails is creating a number of policies as well as resident-level action and city-level action around native plants and other policies that would preserve invertebrates, what we call pollinators, in our city. And the, the initial proposal suggested that we just form what's called an ad hoc committee, but I think in, in his wisdom and experience and the rest of the committee's wisdom, there is foresight, as Counselor Rist had indicated, that we could be doing a lot more with a standing committee around this. And certainly, I anticipate that the B city proposal will be one of the first agenda items. And I think that many times what we see in, in council is an idea submitted that has some good legs or wings, and then we introduce it to the hive mind, I fit in the bees, and allow ideas like that to pupate and arrive at what we have today.
Good guys.
You know, this, this work's important. We're facing a mass extinction of invertebrates, what we call pollinators, and with, they are the, the baseline, the foundation of a complex ecological food web, which includes birds, mammals, and us at the top of that chain. This committee will allow us to do work around that, in addition to other work like the councillor, the councillor indicated. We've had a lot of discussions around plastics and how we could be more smarter around that. The mayor is doing some fantastic work around reducing our carbon footprint. This is a great catch basin for all of that. Just a couple more thank yous, because there was a lot of work, probably about two years of work that went into just getting us where we are now. The Massachusetts Pollinator Network, the Native Plant Trust, Mass Autobahn, and the Piscomic Trust, along with just a lot of grassroots residents and stakeholders who contributed to this. And I will say that I'm really excited to see how many residents are already excited about the, the resident-level work, transforming our yards into pollinator habitats, which is going to be a big part of this work as well. So I appreciate how everyone got together behind this, and thank you very much again, Counselor Rist. We wore matching shirts to commemorate our work together on this.
Any other councillor have any questions? Counselor Riley?
This isn't necessarily a question. It's just more a congratulations and a thank you. So I, I remember when, I don't even think I was sworn in yet as a councillor, and Counselor Zaret, you had had many phone conversations and meetings with me about what something like this would look like. And I was always on board with the vision, and I didn't, I didn't know exactly what it could become. So, you know, to see how much you have put into this over the last, I mean, really, two years, like you said, and to see what it's turning into, I, I think this is a moment in, you know, for us elected officials to celebrate the kind of work that we can get accomplished. I think this is a really good thing for the city, and I think that it is also something to demonstrate to other communities in the region that this is a blueprint going forward that, that can work. So, you know, thank you to you, and then thank you, Counselor Rist, for, you know, kind of turning this into what it is. I think it's going to be really great.
Any other councilors? Before we go to the, I only have one question, and is, I see that it's going to be one member of, of the Conservation Commission, there's a knee, same with the Agriculture Commission, Energy Division, Advisory Committee. Who's going to be the authority to contact them to let them know that they have to do it? Is the mayor's office, is it going to be the city council? We're going to contact them to let them know that they have to appoint someone? Counselor Rist?
I am not sure, but the CPA Committee has similar requirements of participation by other committees in town. And I'm wondering, Barbara, do you not have to notify them if there's a membership shortfall there?
Yeah, if somebody's leaving, we usually reach out to them.
So I would think you would be the one to notify.
Okay. I just wanted for clarification, how are they going to find out how to appoint someone? Perfect, just for the record. Anyone from the public have any questions coming? Can you please go to the podium? Please state your name and address, and we'll give you three minutes.
My phone must be shorter this time. My name is Sean Abbott. I live at 21 Summer Street. I'm here in support of the Bee's Committee. As Counselor Zaret mentioned, we are going through the sixth mass extinction at the baseline that's happening with the pollinators and the invertebrates, but that is going to work its way up the chain, and we see this a lot. You can see it when you drive around, because your windshields aren't covered with bugs anymore, and that's part of it. I think the thing about, you know, where, where we started with this, with the native plants, if you plant native plants in your own yard, you can see the effects that you're having on the world. You can see the insects coming into your yard. You can see more wildlife coming to your yard. And in this day and age, when everything seems like it's out, you know, we have this global perspective, and we can't do anything about anything. Like, we try and deal with plastic, we can't see what it does. We try and drive more efficient cars or whatever, you can't see the effect you have. When you work on this stuff, you can see the effect that you're having. And this committee gives an opportunity to, for individuals to come together to, you know, as part of the city, to have an opportunity to, like, see not only individual actions but collective action. Figuring out what to do in, in any of these cases with all the, you know, not just native plants, but also all the sustainability can be difficult, and this gives us an opportunity to share resources, share ideas, you know, share perspectives, wins, losses. So I think this will be a very important and, you know, really big boon for the city and, and just for residents to be able to, like, have something that they can do and have tangible results that come out of that. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Jeff Cooter, 12 Laurel Drive, East Hampton. I'm here in support of the Bee's Committee. I think this is a very important first step in getting this city certified as a B city. It's also a very important step in recognizing the importance of the environmental health of East Hampton, also protecting our aquifer and our drinking water supply. It's very critical that we have coordinated committee that can look at all aspects of the environmental health that we have in this great city. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Liz?
Hi, I'm Liz. I live in Ward Three. I, for the most part, think a B city is great, but one thing that concerns me when I'm looking up what a B city actually is, is talking about providing nest sites. And when you talk about bees, just a reminder that honeybees are invasive, and they kill native polliners, pollinators, and I just hope that the city is aware of it. I just don't want to see things like honeybee hives disrupting the city. And I also was wondering if we're going to go ahead and be a B city, where will that stand with Williston, where they have, I don't know, they don't really seem to have much use for wildflowers, they use a lot of pesticides, I've noticed. Are we going to ask Williston to also participate in this program?
Counselor Zaret?
So first of all, I think that the, the resident raised a great question. That's about honeybees. So honeybees are not native, and that's one of the many important conversations that we will have to have on this committee as we're talking about B city. More importantly, will be figuring out ways to actually support native pollinators, like the number of species of bumblebees and other ground-dwelling bees that use our native plants, and creating resident education to address exactly some of these concerns that were just brought forward. Regarding Williston or other private enterprises or nonprofits, that will come down to the policy that's developed as part of this committee. So I think part of, part of this work, and some of the work that's already happening around this, will be city-level education. Part of the proposal is to create citywide, both municipal and commercial, policies around native plantings that may or may not apply to institutions such as Williston, but through resident action and citywide action, there'll be a lot of encouragement and teaching points around using native plants. Just as an example, there is a member of a resident group that I've been working with who works for Williston. And I think that once they, hopefully, an institution like them that has so much land in the city and lawn, understands the teaching, A, what they can teach their students, and B, what they can give back to the city, that's the letter B, not the invertebrate B. You know, hopefully, we will see them be able to use, be an example as to how to better use landscaping to foster ecological sustainability. So I think that's a great question, and one that will definitely be a kind of a guiding point as we move through this process.
Counselor Rist?
Just as a point of clarification, what we're doing tonight is establishing a committee that will deal with, one of the topics is B city pollination. That is not being established tonight, that we are going to be a B city. How that happens will be determined by this committee, but it will be dealing more than just pollinization and, and native gardening. It'll be dealing with all aspects of environmental, climate action, energy, thoughts, everything. So we're establishing a committee that will deal with B city, and I encourage residents like Liz who might have concerns to come to these meetings before that is brought to, back to the council to establish a B city. This committee will discuss all of that, and I'm sure those concerns will be addressed, as Counselor Zaret said. So tonight, we're just, we're, we're creating a committee that does a lot more than just dealing with the bees, even though that was the starting point for it.
Anyone in from the public? Seeing none, Counselor Rist?
I move to amend the city ordinance as chapter two, Administration, Article Three, City Committees, Boards, and Councils by adding a new Division 12 entitled Biodiversity, Environmental, Ecological Sustainability Committee as presented to the council for this meeting.
Second? We have a motion and a second for the city ordinance amendment. Chapter two, Administration, Article Three, City Committees, Boards, and Councils add a new Division 12 Biodiversity, Environmental, and Ecological Sustainability Committee. Any further discussion? Counselor Zaret?
Yes, Mr. President, I submitted some recommendation earlier for a very small housekeeping item in terms of the language, just, it's important in the intention of the language to recognize all the stakeholders, and originally, there was some discussion about the planning department or the planning board being more directly involved, but I wanted to make sure that, that their department was specifically named as one of the stakeholders, and also as such that the Energy Advisory Committee, which is later named as a stakeholder, be removed because they'll now have representation on the board. So I don't know, whatever your preference is, Mr. President, if you want me to actually make a motion to amend that, or if that's, it's something as simple as, as just noting that small language change. I could read, read it all if you'd like to make that amendment, or.
Make the motion, that's fine.
Okay. So I'd like to make a motion as follows then, to amend the ordinance as it appears. Let me just pull this up, I want to see how they're printed. Thank you. To amend the second paragraph in section two dash seven six one, which follows, following the composition of the committee, which currently reads, "The committee shall pursue input from other departments, dot, dot, dot," to revise that paragraph, to strike where it states Energy Advisory Committee, and insert Planning Department.
Second? We have a motion and a seconds to amend the original motion. Any further discussion about the amendment? Seeing none, Barbara?
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kozinski.
Aye.
Dave Munier. Tom Peak.
Aye.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Owen Zaret.
Aye.
Motion passes. Any other councilors above the main motion? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second as an amended. Barbara?
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kozinski.
Aye.
Dave Munier.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Owen Zaret.
Aye.
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Motion passes. Congratulations, Counselor Zaret. And is going to be a city council in that committee, please send me an email, and we'll appoint you to that committee. Counselor Rist?
Last thing is the administrative code change, which we discussed at length last meeting, had some great debate. The Community Relations Committee currently has 11 members. This administrative code change, we'll change it to seven. Since then, we received two emails, which were very thoughtful, indicating that seven members might be the way to go. I've learned this evening that there's only five members currently on the committee, and if there's 11, that isn't even enough to meet. So reducing it to seven allows the committee to have some action. They can propose to the mayor down the road to increase it from seven to nine. I would strongly suggest that they not go back to 11. But at this time, and I've gone back and forth myself, I am going to recommend to the council that we do change it to seven, based on the thoughts I've heard from committee members, current committee members, and the fact that if there's only five members, they need to be able to meet, and they needed, then they would only have a quorum of four necessary with a seven-member committee. So I encourage the council to adopt this as, as written.
Any councillor have any comments, questions? Counselor Riley?
Yeah, so, you know, at the end of our last meeting, you know, I gave my Yeah, so, you know, at the end of our last meeting, you know, I gave my word that I would reach out to the Community Relations Committee to put forward a good faith effort to do some recruitment and outreach so that the Community Relations Committee can fulfill its original intent. So, you know, Counselor Denham, myself, and Counselor Gomez met with the Community Relations Committee. We had a really long conversation about what their specific concerns are, and, you know, what they would like to see this committee become. So echoing everything that Counselor Rist just said, and then I think also, there was a, a request for the mayor to say publicly that this would not be an end-all decision at seven, that once the recruitment picks up, that the mayor would be amenable to increasing the seat total to nine. And then I just think, you know, the last thing to really put forward here is, you know, even with the number of folks who are on this committee right now, the amount of work that needs to get done, from a capacity standpoint, is still very difficult for those members to be able to carry out this work, to do the work of the actual committee, and to then also do the outreach and recruitment pieces. I have given my word that I will help them in that process, but this needs to be a government-wide intentional effort, where all city councilors are engaged in the process, and that the mayor is also engaged in the process, because as we know from our city charter, none of this progress occurs without the mayor appointing the folks who would be on this committee. So, you know, I'm not going to speak for them. I know that we have some members here, but I just wanted to provide a little more context to that.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselor? Counselor Sarret?
I mean, this is going to mostly echo what's already been said, but, you know, having been here from pre-CRC, when this was just a thought in the, in the, in the minds of the mayor and Chief Alberti and other stakeholders involved with the DOJ Working Group, the committee was immediately met with some challenges with, namely, the pandemic in terms of, in terms of being able to meet. This committee is incredibly important to our city. Even just looking back at, at a number of incidents that have occurred where the CRC would play a pivotal role in the last few years, I was surprised to hear that they've been having difficulty meeting over the last year, and we need a functioning committee. Now, ultimately, we need a functioning committee that also includes many voices, I mean, diverse voices, but if we don't have the committee doing the work to get there, with, the mission's kind of, it's a mission failure. So I agree that we need to figure out how to get them to meet and do their job, but we also, as part of their job, have to, have to encourage them to figure out how we're going to get back up to more numbers and more diverse representation, as well as be there to support them, and I will certainly also throw my hat in the ring too, as someone who's willing to be a resource to this committee in whatever way they, they see fit. So I do support reducing the number only in so much that that allows the committee to meet and do their work, but with the caveat that I expect that we will all work together to find ways to then increase that membership so that we can have a broader committee membership.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselor? Anyone from the public? Want to say, or add something?
Good evening. I'm Emily Britton, and I live in Ward Three, and I am the chairwoman of the CRC, and it's a position I've held solely since the former co-chair resigned last summer. I haven't had the pleasure--
You go closer to the mic.
Oh, sorry. I haven't had the pleasure of meeting many of you, so I wanted to just quickly introduce myself. I moved to East Hampton in the summer of 2008, and I've loved it here since, but I'm also aware that I'm in several majority identities in this town. I'm white, I'm female, I'm heterosexual, I'm privileged in many ways, and so, you know, my loving it here may be, you know, influenced by those privileges. I'm a clinical psychologist at the Department of Veterans Affairs, where I've worked since 2008. At the VA Hospital, I'm a co-chair of the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Subcommittee of the Psychology Internship Program, and I supervise facilitation of the Race-Based Stress and Trauma Empowerment Group there. Those are both two really valuable experiences for me. I want to just restate a few things tonight. The CRC's mission is pretty huge. It's also kind of vague, even though we all understand the, the goal, and it needs action steps. So the mission is this, our mission is to promote positive relations throughout East Hampton's diverse population. We'll work to build a sense of inclusion, community, and pride, where community members feel welcome, accepted, and valued. So that mission is a little daunting to me, and I'm forever wanting to pare it down, but it was approved by quorum several years ago, and we've struggled with working on, much less achieving such a mission ever since, and it's pretty obvious by our attendance records, of the meetings, that is. So I trust that the council will do the best thing for the CRC, because I listened to the April 5th meeting that you all held, and the recording, and I heard a lot of really sincere, heartfelt, thoughtful opinions, and I believe that everyone is hoping to preserve a functional CRC. So I want to thank you very much for all the time that you've put into the deliberation on April 5th, and the meeting when some of you attended with us on April 13th, and any time that it takes tonight. The CRC held many meetings about a strategic plan to guide us, and our contact at the Department of Justice, Derek Dean, who you may have experienced moderating our Black History Month on February 26 at Luthiers, he encouraged a vote among us to decide on a few select action steps, and we've not been able to vote on those items since, due to the quorum issue. And in that absence, and without enough manpower, we certainly couldn't be an advisory committee, which I know Dan Rist spoke about on April 5th. Years earlier, we had chosen a facilitation, education role, but we are aware that another role could be the advisory role. So just changing direction a bit, just recent events obviously show us that implicit bias and microaggression training may be really necessary in this city, and we at the, at the CRC are happy to collaborate with other bodies in this city to address it in a constructive way. If you don't see enough collaboration from us, it's not for want of interest, it's simply due to lack of time, because this is a volunteer committee. So regardless of tonight's outcome, I hope that people listening feel comfortable applying to be part of the committee, because we need more voices, just as Owen Zaret said, and all of you have said. The structure of government committees is difficult, and it's very easy to throw up our hands and say it's hopeless when there are no meeting spaces or not enough days in the week to get something on the agenda in the proper time. But the guiding values of community and inclusion are still helping us stick to it. So thank you for your consideration of our desire to build up to at least nine members. So thank you.
Thank you. Just for the record, I, and I know I allow her to speak more than three minutes. That was on purpose, because she is the chairwoman of the committee. We want to know what the committee's thinking. That's really important for us to listen to you. Anyone in from the public?
Hi, my name is Rebecca Pasa. Like Emily, I'm also a member of the Community Relations Committee that has been on the committee since the beginning. And I actually had hoped to come for public speak so I could maybe talk more broadly, but as I've been on the committee, one of my concerns has been good communications between city bodies, and it maybe I'd, I'd come in the future, or at least generally let you know that now, and part of the communication is talking to you. Emily also mentioned the training program. We had some original training before forming the committee, but interestingly, that training actually didn't cause us to look at our ordinance carefully or to think, I think maybe because that would have been public business and it needed to be recorded. So in recorded meetings, we met with Derek Dean of the Community Relations Service of the Department of Justice, and he brought our attention to types of community relations committees and human rights committees, that there's three types. You mentioned, you know, there's a quasi judicial that would help people with complaints, there is advisory, and there's facilitative. One of the existing concerns brought up with those is, with some of those models, municipalities have provided municipal staff to support that. You know, if you're, if we're going to investigate complaints, for example, that's a lot of work that's really beyond a volunteer group, and even the advisory, we haven't had a volunteer to say go through city ordinances, so unless something's brought to our attention, we're, we haven't really advised, felt able to provide advice. So those are communication things that I don't know, maybe I should ask about how to get on your agenda to see if we can talk about that kind of a thing. But one thing I wanted to say for tonight and quorum, I just thought I'd let you know that the hardworking subquorum of committee members, and I've been relying on the city charter, Section eight, eight D, it says what a quorum is, but it also says, "A smaller number may meet and adjourn from time to time." So relying on the idea of the smaller number at least being allowed to meet, we have met. I have looked back at our attendance, I've seen we have not had a quorum for, for a full year, but we have met, we had some staunch volunteers put together--
Three minutes.
--with the film festival, an event. We did hope, we tried to advertise, we hoped you all knew about it. If you didn't know, well, you've missed it. Now, maybe the thing we shouldn't have done is said it was sponsored by the CRC--
Three minutes.
--because we didn't have a quorum.
Thank you.
But, thank you very much.
Anyone else here?
So you are getting a variety of perspectives.
Is your name and address?
Oh, my name is Miriam Ansara, 359 Main Street, Unit 2A, and I'll say you are getting a variety of, of perspectives tonight, and I hope that I'm going to add a little bit more. I'm a newly appointed member of the Community Relations Committee. I've so far attended one meeting where there were three other members besides me. I attended the April 5th meeting where the mayor's proposal to reduce the committee from 11 to seven members was introduced. At that meeting, I expressed my views opposing the reduction of the committee to seven members. At the April 13th meeting of the CRC I attended, the three other members, who have devoted long hours and a lot of heart to the committee, explained to me how, without being able to reach a quorum at any meeting and therefore be able to vote, they were stymied in implementing almost any program of action to fulfill the CRC mission. I understand, and with them composed a letter to Mayor LaChapelle advocating that the reduction to seven be approved, but with the premise that the mayor would commit both to a full assessment, and that has not been raised yet, and to me, that is a critical element of, of what has to happen. We need a full assessment of the committee since its inception, what have been the challenges, and what have been the achievements, and what have been the obstacles. But let me go on. That the mayor would commit both to a full assessment of the obstacles and challenges over the CRC's few years of existence, and to a major outreach and recruitment effort to all sectors of the community, and a full program of activity to which all sectors of the community, or perhaps Israeli communities, plural, can relate. If after six to nine months this effort proved successful, it would lead to a new proposal to increase membership in the CRC to nine, and I am putting a timeframe on that, and, and quite deliberately, and I hope people hear that. I would like to echo that request to the city council members, both those who represent specific districts and those who serve at large. We need your help with assessment of the challenges to date and going forward, with recruitment, and with the design of the most appropriate and inclusive programs that can represent all your constituents. The three current and active members of the CRC whom I met, I have enormous respect for, not just for their persistence in sticking with the CRC, but for what I saw of an entirely open heart and spirit for the CRC and for the city. It's not enough, and it must be exhausting for them. As I understand it, there is currently a larger membership, well, there was, there now is not, but I have not heard that in any way it is inactive membership. What ensures that in reducing to seven people, and even managing a quorum at meetings will lead to an effective program and community involvement for the CRC? Can a quorum of four ensure that there is effective programming? If only four people are consistently active, what can be accomplished programmatically, including effective outreach, broad communication? Oh, let me finish. And representation, it's just two paragraphs more, and representation of the interests of the many sectors of the community. I'll rush. My personal feeling is that reducing to seven may be a useful stopgap measure to try to get the CRC on its feet with the suggested assessment, which I suggest be professionally-led, but it will be hard even to do effective recruitment, let alone programming, the first of which will not be fruitful, without the second, and vice versa.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Let me read one last line.
Thank you.
The goals of the CRC are worthy, but goals do not have full merit if they are not able to be implemented. I must learn to read faster.
Excuse me.
I, I just want to, one, echo Mary's sentiment around my gratitude, and I really appreciate the three active members of the Community Relations Committee for really holding this close to the heart and soul of the community. In the past, I've been very clear that the Community Relations Committee is the one committee that both myself and the police department would shy away from as, including putting forward appointments and have it be a first come, first served. The reason for that is not to stack, or have the appearance of the mayor or the police chief of stacking the committee. I've also said that the status of the Community Relations Committee is a reflection of our larger community, whether it be disappointing, or whether it be overwhelmingly attended and wanted a start-off seat, regardless. It is where we are as a community and a city, and I suggest the membership of seven to at least start the process of programming without the cosponsorship of the city of East Hampton. With our cosponsorship, it allows of the city, we're more than thrilled to do it, but it allows the Community Relations Committee to promote the X-Link program, programs that they have, and also access a budget that, a budget amount that is exclusive to the CRC. As far as an analysis of the CRC, I don't disagree, but I don't find it to be the mayor's place, and of course, the council can make up their own determination. An analysis, I feel, in my personal and mayor opinion, would be the resources of the Department of Justice, who has been with us for the last three years, working through this, as well as other members of consulting staff, including Dr. Hendricks and Dr. Lomax Campbell, and provide those supports that have a wide breadth of equity work, and also with community relations committees. The ordinance itself is language from the Department of Justice, and is indeed vague to allow the committee to do exactly what they spoke about today, which is decide what direction they wanted to go and what kind of committee they want to be. I remain resolute in supporting this committee. We'll continue making sure that they have funds available to pursue programming and speakers, or even a structural consultant for the composition of, of the committee. The budget, as well as the direction of the CRC, is completely up to-- The budget, as well as the direction of the CRC, is completely up to the CRC from the perspective of my office. I also am grateful for Maryam Ansar to join our, this committee and other members. I would just point out, my request of seven gives the committee right off the starting block a quorum. As far as raising the number or lowering the number of a committee, that's certainly something I'm open to going forward, but can't commit to at this point.
Thank you. Shelby?
Hi, Shelby Lee. I'm in District 3. I just wanted to say that the CRC is proving that they're not up to the task of being CRC members. It's their responsibility as committee members to engage with and encourage diverse candidates to get on the committee. So they need to recuse themselves and make way for 11 new members. Your definition of a functioning CRC is not the same as mine. Thank you.
Thank you, Shelby. Liz?
I agree with what Shelby has said. I used to sit on these CRC meetings back in 2020 when we were all at home and there wasn't much else to do. And I've never found them to be functional in the least. Last week, this, or two weeks ago, the city council was talking about how people are afraid or intimidated to go through the process of becoming on a CRC. And we all know that a lot of that has to do with this, this city council. And an event that happened where members of this council would lead a candidate, maybe some more than others. And I don't think that the thing to do right now is to wash our hands of that. And I think we need to own up to the responsibility. And instead of lessening the mission statement or the numbers, we need to remember that the DOJ made the recommendation for this committee. And it shouldn't be up to them to decide what they want to be doing. This committee should have a clear cut message and live up to that message. And I don't think that the answer is to lessen the numbers. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz. Anyone else in the public? Any other counselors? Counselor Sarik?
Just a quick question for the, for the council or from a parliamentary standpoint. Is there anything, regardless of, of committee membership, is there anything stopping any standing committee and obviously in this, in this conversation, the CRC, from having working groups that include non-CRC members in order to both diversify thought and conversations and be able to have help in expanding the, the work, their work, the, you know, carrying the weight of their workload? Is that something that's possible?
Absolutely.
Absolutely. There's no parliamentary, I'm sorry, there's no charter related or even mass general law that would prevent working groups from being established. The committee could reach out to have a working group of volunteers to work on some subject they want to deal with. They don't have to be members. But having a quorum, as the mayor pointed out, there's programming, there's even budgetary dollars available to the CRC to initiate programming, to initiate speakers and everything they want. But they have to vote on that and they have to get that to the mayor's office. Can we have funds to do whatever? And that's just open meeting. That's mass general law. You can't have a functioning committee unless you have a quorum. And it's not our rule, it's the state law. And it's a good law because if you have seven members, four would allow you to function. So again, I, I don't agree with the speaker that wants to throw out your committee. You have hardworking volunteers. You should listen to what maybe others who disagree with you have to say, as you always will. But I think you're, you are an important committee and I'd like to see the seven, seven-member committee actually function and get programming done. And that can happen if you have a quorum to, to vote on some subject you want to bring forward to the mayor's office. She's just indicated she, she's going to fund it and she's going to help you program it. So that's my statement. And of course, Counselor Sarik, any of that could happen too.
Counselor Denham?
A couple of things I want to say. First of all, I have the highest amount of respect for the current members on the committee. I think that they are working hard. I think that they are taking on, in some instances, financial risks because they don't have a quorum to be able to pay for certain events that I, that I learned. I think that's, on the one hand, incredibly problematic. I think that they are, in some ways, not at a loss, but trying to figure out how do we move forward with the things that, as individuals, they're committed to and the reasons why they personally decided to get involved with this committee and the convictions that they have. And, and, you know, I, I respect, I respect that very much, that commitment and that, that dedication. And at the same time, I, I don't think it's, as I, as I'm listening, I'm, I'm struggling with the fact that, I don't think the first step is a quorum, right? I, I think that there has been, and I mentioned this last week, that, that there has been an underlying, not underlying, very, I think overt, lack of trust that has taken place because of how, and we heard it again, how certain members or committee or community members in their efforts to participate in this and how they were treated. And I, and I think that that, that's a systemic problem. And I don't think giving a committee a quorum is going to fix that, right? Because the fact of the matter is, it's just potential more attacks that can come to committee members, potential community members who want to be a part of this, of this committee. And so I'm very much struggling with the fact that I don't think the underlying problem here is quorum. The underlying problem is a lack of trust and a commitment on the part of council. I mean, the, the mayor has just said her commitment to that. And I, I think there's some underlying things here that need to be addressed first. And so I'll just say it, and it's not out of any lack of respect for the people on this committee. I've already indicated my commitments to this, to this committee, my commitment to recruiting people, to talking to former members of this committee. But I'm not in a place right now that I can support this because I don't think, the problem's not the quorum, right? And I think we need to have some deeper conversations about how we recruit, how we build trust with community members to, to, community members to, to want to be a part of this and to feel that they can be without having, or without being personally attacked or questioned or their motives under assault or, you know, whatever. But I, I think that that's what's underlying this, this issue that we're having. And I think if we want more voice, more perspective, diverse perspective, et cetera, then I think that we have to address some of those underlying issues. And so it's, it's not a, a lack of belief in this committee for my vote of saying no this evening, but it's about, I'm saying no as a means of holding the council accountable. And so I want to make that clear. And I'm absolutely 100% committed to this group and nothing but respect, but that's how I'm feeling in this moment.
Thank you, Counselor Denham. Any other counselor? Counselor Riley?
I'm, I'm going to be very quick. So the first thing that I just want to do is I want to thank Counselor Peak because, you know, I think that we were in the process of just making a quick decision at the last meeting. And the opportunity that I had to think about this whole process and to actually weigh in, to go to the meeting, to meet with the members and hear what their, what their perspectives are, we wouldn't have had the opportunity were that not the original suggestion. So, you know, you said at the last meeting that whenever we kind of are going back and forth, those are the times to give us a moment of pause to consider what we should and shouldn't be doing, and that was well needed. With respect to the members of the public that spoke out, the, the folks that we have that are on this committee are under no illusion that this is going to be a simple fix, that it's just going to be something, okay, this is a done deal, the, the process is over. I didn't hear that from a single one of them. I feel that they're committed. They understand the amount of work that needs to get done. And it's daunting work and, and I know that they understand that. So I don't think that the solution is to just throw the process away. I think that everybody has indicated a willingness to make it work. And that is much more progress than what we had two weeks ago when nobody was even talking about this situation. So, you know, it's a first step, but it's the right first step to take. So I, I'm going to be voting to support the reduction down to seven because that was the consensus of the individuals on the committee. And I stand by what they believe in and knowing that the mayor has the, support the process as well is, is sufficient for me.
Thank you, Counselor Riley. Counselor Peak?
Thank you, Mr. President. I've been listening. I really wasn't sure coming into this where I was going to come down on a lot of this, but I think that I'm attempting to synthesize, you know, some of the community concerns we're hearing with what we're hearing from the folks in the jobs. And I think that sort of what I'm hearing in terms of community concerns, I think that the, what's the worst thing that could happen if we vote for this tonight is the idea that we reduce the quorum down. And then there is a committee that is effect, that has a quorum, is able to take votes, but it's lacking certain perspectives, it's lacking certain ideas, and that continues to be sort of, to, to, that, that continues to sort of prevent the committee from, from doing certain things that perhaps a lot of people would, would maybe want it to do. And then on the other hand, I just think that bodies that don't function are, you know, why would you join a, a body that consistently fails to have a quorum? So I, I see these sort of two things and the closest I can come to sort of synthesizing them together is to say that if it's the opinion of the current membership and of the, at least, you know, with, all due respect, I, I completely understand Counselor Denham's suggestions, but of, of the majority of the council that I actually met have come away feeling this way, then I, I'm willing to defer to those people with the caveat that going forward as we evaluate this committee, I am going to be wanting to keep an eye on making sure that exactly what some of the folks in the community tonight are worried about is not what ends up happening. If people are coming up for reappointment and there's a broad sense that this committee is sort of the, is, is not, you know, included, is not including certain voices, is not doing certain things that people want, even with the quorum, that is something that I think I, I would encourage my appointment committees, colleagues to, to sort of look into. And it's certainly something where if it seemed like even at a, a smaller membership, certain things were not effective, then that's, there could be some difficult conversations there. I'm just being frank about that because I don't want to make it sound like I'm not listening to the folks who have raised concerns or that I don't understand those concerns. But at the same time, it's just really hard sometimes to get people to volunteer for unpaid municipal public service. And I want to give the folks here who have stuck through all of this a chance to right that ship in a structure that actually allows them to meet and take votes and take actions. But the actions that I, this council will be looking for as going forward is that some of this stuff actually gets, you know, proactively addressed and that, you know, various stakeholders are, are heard and, and whatnot in a way that frankly sounds incredibly daunting to me. I, I don't envy your position. So that's, that's what I've got.
Thank you. Any other counselors? Counselor Sarik?
I think tonight is a perfect example why we need a functioning CRC that can meet. There, the question at hand is shall the number of members be reduced from 11 to seven? For the committee that will ultimately have the discussions and the thoughtful deliberations and receive input from the public to discuss all the things that have been brought up tonight. And so there's already, seems to me that there's already a number of agenda items that have been served to you on a nice plate that I know you've already been working on. And you know what? I thank you all for your perseverance and sticking this out for so long despite not being able to meet and some of the, the complications sometimes of the innate nature of the committee you serve on where you have to receive complaints from the public. And not everyone's happy necessarily with the answers you give them. So I, I just, I, I think that we need, we need to have a functioning CRC. And, and so reducing the number to seven will allow that to happen. And as the mayor indicated, there's no reason not to explore some other options in the future, should those options present themselves.
Thank you. Counselor Lukasiewski?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I think it's really important that we have a functioning CRC and that's one that is open to everyone, that it can work to represent all, all parts of the community so that everyone has a voice. And we have a functioning committee in the process. I struggled very much with the number. It seems like quite a drastic reduction to go from 11 to seven. And I, I know there had been discussion about nine members as a way of helping with the quorum issue and also helping with keeping, there, there are enough positions open that we can appoint more folks to the committee as the interest expands. I'm hoping that the interest expands. I'm hoping that the mayor is indeed open to raising the number of members in the committee. I will vote for this tonight, but I, somewhat reluctantly, I will say, because I really believe we're making a very drastic step to go to seven. I'm doing so because everyone who's been working so hard deserves to have a committee that has, can have a quorum. And I hear that very clearly. I also hear that we have folks who would like to be on the committee and would like to see a process that is open. I'd like to see that process. Also, I'd like to see more members, but I think we need to move on with getting the ball rolling with folks who are willing to work hard right now.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselor? Counselor Peak?
I just want to, very respectfully, I don't want Counselor Sarik to feel called out because you're not the first one to say this tonight, but there's, you said something that a few people said, and I just want to point out something. Giving a committee a quorum does not, and I don't know that anyone specifically meant this, I think that we're using some shorthand here, which is fine, but just so that we're clear on the record, giving a committee a quorum does not make them functional. It makes, gives them a chance to be functional. The Massachusetts State House has a quorum. I would argue they are not largely functional. The United States House of Representatives has a quorum. I would argue they are not largely functional. There are countless municipal groups around this country that have fully enough members, but those members are not doing the things that I would probably want them to do or that maybe a large group of the community would want them to do or that particularly vulnerable and impacted people would, would want them to do. And I don't, I'm not making sort of any of any accusations that that's how this committee will act. I just want to point out that when we're reducing membership, there is a cost associated with that. I'm okay with bearing that cost in the short term in order to give people a chance to be functional, but that is what this does. Whether or not the committee is functional ultimately depends on the members and the community, and some of that we can support, and some of that is out of our hands, but I just want to make sure that we're, understand here that reducing a quorum does not automat, reducing a committee's size in order to ensure a quorum might give a committee a chance to be functional where they're not currently able to take votes, but it doesn't necessarily guarantee that they will. There are plenty of multi-member bodies that are fully staffed and are not functional.
Thank you. Counselor Denham?
Excuse me if that's pedantic.
No, that's fine. Counselor Denham?
No, I just appreciate that, Counselor Peak, and I just want to say again, functionality, quorum, that's not the problem. So we're not victim of the problem. So that's all I'm going to say.
Thank you. Any other counselors? Before I take the motion, I just want to make a few comments. First, I want to say thank you for the members who are part of this committee. The difference between the bodies the Counselor Peak was talking, those elected officials, the people who are talking there are volunteers. It's a huge commitment. They don't get paid. We get paid. We are not volunteers. The committees are volunteer people, and we have to recognize that. The people from our community are serving in committees because they want the best for the community. I do believe the part of, the lack of the members, or the people not participating in this committee, I agree with Counselor Denham, it's about trust, but I do agree that this committee to move forward, have to have a quorum to have meetings, and having the quorum to having meetings will create the trust, that I hope it happens, to have more members in the future. We need members. We need people of color. We need people from the LGBTQ participating in the committee. We need every single possible minorities in the committee. We have to remind all the time that to be included, and that's going to be tough, when it happened a few years, when we have an extensive interview with one person of color, was extensive, but again, it's a huge commitment. It's a huge commitment for us. Sometimes we miss meetings, and we get paid. I cannot imagine someone that's not getting paid and having multiple meetings a month. It's a huge commitment, and that's what we have to keep reminding all the time. One of the last things that I want to say is, I hope, and I'm one of those humans that will have hopes, that we increase the numbers in the future, and it's going to be a functional committee doing good stuff for our community, because we need this CRC. I think the mission statement is clear, and we need it, and I think we need it today more than any other day, what we've been having in our community for the last month. We need you guys, and I encourage the people from the community to apply. Apply. Send your name to the mayor's office, because I want to see that soon. And again, thank you. Counselor Rist?
I move that pursuant to Administrative Code 23-01, pursuant to the East Hampton Home Rule Charter Section 6-1B and City Ordinance Section 2-75.1, the City of East Hampton hereby alters the total number of appointed positions to the Community Relations Committee from the current total of 11 appointees to 7 appointees.
We have a motion and a second for that, Administration Code Number 23-01, reducing the number of the members, the members of the Community Relations Committee from 11 to 7. Any further discussion? See you now, Barbara.
JP Kuzinski?
Aye.
Dave Munier?
Dave Munier?
He said aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Better now.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Owen Zara?
Aye.
Connie Denham?
No.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. I will take a motion to close public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close public hearing. Any further discussion? See you now, Barbara.
Dave Munier?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Owen Zara?
Aye.
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kuzinski?
Aye.
Motion passes. That public hearing is officially closed. Correspondent announcement for the President and Vice President of Communications. I just want to give a heads up to the counselors. It's a possibility that we're going to have a meeting soon, like everybody knows, and I will say publicly, thanking Shannon Denham for your service as a school committee member. The procedure is to replace a school committee member is to have a joint meeting from the city council and the school committee. We call that a convention, that I'm expecting that is going to happen pretty soon, so we expect an email to start that process pretty soon. And again, thank you, Shannon, for your service, and I hope you get better soon. Report from the standing committees. Finance, Counselor Rist.
Yes, Mr. President. We'll be meeting next Wednesday, the 26th, at 5:15 to deal with the new business that I will be sending to committee this evening. Also, I wanted to make sure everybody understood that I sent out the budget meetings. We now have a budget, study it, and those meetings have been scheduled already. We meet with the mayor and the department heads as, I think it's five total meetings to do that. So just as a point of interest, I would rather, this is what I do. I don't nickel and dime the budget. I look for the big changes. I look for the changes and why they're occurring. We can always debate, and as Counselor Gomez would always say, every dime counts, but look at the big changes and try to study them and ask the questions about those. Where's the reductions? Where's the increases? And why? Those are the questions I think we should be asking. So that's all I have, Mr. President. Those budget meetings are scheduled.
Thank you, Counselor Rist. Public safety, Counselor Saric.
Thank you, Mr. President. We met last Thursday at 6:30 in Down in Room B. The main point, the main item of our conversation was the request to add a school zone in the vicinity of Mountain View School on Park Street. Generally, the language as submitted in the packet was approved. There was some conversation as to, there was some conversation as to whether the driveway to Mountain View should be included in that school zone after a conversation with the DPW director. While there's agreement that we should establish a speed limit on there, the way that the MGL establishes school zones, it would have to be an area of budding. So we also discussed that the times, which I've obtained from the superintendent, so this is a long-winded way of saying that the committee did make a recommendation to the full council to approve the school zone as recommended with conversations around the school driveway, but that should, I feel that that should be left out of the conversation for now until we have a more robust conversation. There was even a suggestion we may have to engage the city attorney. I don't know if it's that complicated, but there is some, there is some time sensitivity to this. So I'd like to set a public hearing for May, is that May 3? May 3, for, to add the school zone in the vicinity of Mountain View School on Park Street. It's a motion.
Second.
Before that, do you want to move the East Street? Will we be hearing for the same day?
I would love to, Mr. President, or I could do that after, whatever you prefer.
Both together.
Oh, okay. So I'm going to withdraw that motion then.
You have to withdraw the second?
Oh, I've withdrawn.
So the Main Street, I'm sorry, the East Street No Parking Zone, I believe, was scheduled for two meetings from now, and it sounds like, in the conversations with city council leadership, that we can move that to this next meeting. So at this time, I would actually like to move both, make a motion to move both the school zone conversation as well as the no parking on East Street, both to a public hearing on May 3 at 6:15 in these chambers.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to schedule a public hearing about the no parking area in East Street and the school zone for May 3 at 6:15 in these chambers. Any further discussion? See you now, Barbara.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Owen Zara?
Aye.
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kuzinski?
Aye.
Dave Munier?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Owen Zara?
Aye.
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kuzinski?
Aye.
Dave Munier?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Owen Zara?
Aye.
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kuzinski?
Aye.
Dave Munier?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Owen Zara?
Aye.
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kuzinski?
Aye.
Dave Munier?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Owen Zara?
Aye.
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kuzinski?
Aye.
Dave Munier?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Owen Zara?
Aye.
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kuzinski?
Aye.
Dave Munier?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Owen Zara?
Aye.
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kuzinski?
Aye.
Dave Munier?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Owen Zara?
Aye.
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kuzinski?
Aye.
Dave Munier?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Owen Zara?
Aye.
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kuzinski?
Aye.
Dave Munier?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Owen Zara?
Aye.
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kuzinski?
Yes.
Dave Munier?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Owen Zara?
Aye.
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kuzinski?
Aye.
Dave Munier?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Owen Zara?
Aye.
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kuzinski?
Aye.
Dave Munier?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Owen Zara?
Aye.
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kuzinski?
Aye.
Dave Munier?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Owen Zara?
Aye.
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kuzinski?
Aye.
Dave Munier?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Owen Zara?
Aye.
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kuzinski?
Aye.
Dave Munier?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Owen Zara?
Aye.
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kuzinski?
Aye.
Dave Munier?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Owen Zara?
Aye.
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kuzinski?
Aye.
Dave Munier?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Owen Zara?
Aye.
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kuzinski?
Aye.
Dave Munier?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Owen Zara?
Aye.
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kuzinski?
Aye.
Dave Munier?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
This one will be much more brief. So the Ordinance Committee last met on April 11th to review the zoning ordinance on LED sign and electronic messaging center signs and also to review a request to add an ordinance regarding the use of civilian traffic control monitors. At our next meeting, we'll discuss specific items on the Ordinance Review Committee's final report that we intend to introduce as new city council business so that I, so that it will appear on our agenda. We'll also have Chief Alberti in person to discuss the civilian traffic control monitor ordinance. And I guess unless anybody has any questions, I'll just conclude by saying that the next meeting will be on April 25th at 6:00 PM and the meeting space has yet to be determined, but we will get on that as soon as possible and thus concludes.
Thank you, Councilor Riley. Property, Councilor Kozinski?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to report that the Property Committee will be meeting on April 27th at 6:00 PM remotely for the purpose of discussing the school reuse proposals and hearing from the School Reuse Proposal Evaluation Committee, their report and recommendation. We will be working to be on track so that we can have a full public hearing on the matter at 6:15 on May, May 17th, Wednesday at 6:15. This concludes.
Thank you, Councilor Kozinski. Rules, Councilor Riss?
Yes, Rules Government Relations Committee will meet on May 2nd at 5:30 in Conference Room 1. It'll be a hybrid meeting. That's May 2nd, 5:30. We will be discussing the charter amendments which we received back from the city attorney and try to send those off to the city council for final review as well as the rule change as submitted, Rule 5F by Councilor Gomez. So that's May 2nd at 5:30. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. New business, Councilor Riss?
I move that we, that we request to amend City Ordinance Chapter 7 Classification and Pay Plan to add the position of data collector of grade C be moved to the Ordinance Committee for review.
Second. We have a motion and a second to move the request to amend the City Ordinance Chapter 7 Classification of Pay Plan and CBA, add the new position of data collector at grade C to the Ordinance Committee and for discussion. Seeing on Barbara.
Owen Zara?
Aye.
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Yes.
Dave Munier?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Motion passes.
I move that the numeral appointment of Veronica France Eagleston to the National Nash Pond Committee with the expiration of 12/31/2025 be sent to the Appointments Committee for review.
Second. We have a motion and a second for the new majority appointment to move it to the Appointments Committee and for discussion. Seeing on Barbara.
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Dave Munier?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Owen Zara?
Aye.
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Yes.
Dave Munier?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Owen Zara?
Aye.
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Dave Munier?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Owen Zara?
Aye.
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Dave Munier?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Owen Zara?
Aye.
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Dave Munier?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Owen Zara?
Aye.
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Dave Munier?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Owen Zara?
Aye.
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?